Welcome to the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting of June 2nd. We're at the pocket.
Roomed.
Roomed.
Seven oh five.
We're starting seven oh five, okay, thank you. All right, let's start with a hunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, let's take a roll call. So there I go.
Uh, Mrs. Issen.
Here.
Mr. Kachas.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
President.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stovart.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a quorum bound present.
Thank you, Mr. Vigo. Um, we're gonna do things a little out of order tonight. Um, we're gonna start off with, um, listening to our visitors, recognition of visitors, and we have one visitor who has signed up, Mr. Shola. Um, okay, um, the following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Okay, Mr. Shola.
Thank you. Jeffrey Shola, 2194 Harrison City Export Road. No affiliation. Um, I'm here to respectfully request that the board abide by the vote that you took last year unanimously to not overspend the $32 million. Don't know all the details, read some different things, but I'm hopeful that, um, that when you take a vote, you make a vote, stand by the vote. I think people respect you more when you do that. I know that there was something I've also read about the fact that obviously nobody else is here to speak for or against it. Not meant, you know, I actually have another obligation to attend at the same time. I'm gonna run over there when I'm done. I think that has to be considered a lot of times, too. People have other obligations, other commitments, whether it's baseball or whatever people do this time of year. And obviously unless it hits them in the pocketbook or it's something personal, they don't care to. I knew that from being involved with the township affiliation. So I think that's something to always take into consideration. Um, I've also read some other comments that we, uh, because of the fact that there's this consideration with the alternates and the expenditures of money that we're comparing ourselves to Franklin, Regional, Hempfield, Norwood, and Gateway. I think that's really unfair because these three districts, or four districts, get my number right, sorry, all have a very large commercial tax base that I think Penn Trafford School District and Penn Township obviously does not have. And I think that when you consider those kind of things, uh, it's really unfair to throw us all into the same mix because I look at Monroeville, I look at Hempfield, I look at North Huntington, Franklin, which is Murraysville to some degree, obviously they have a greater, much greater, uh, commercial tax base that Penn Trafford does not have. So the consideration of comparing us to these schools for whatever reason, I think, is unfair. Now, the one thing I like to compare our school district to the others in would be the fact that our, uh, academic standards or academic achievements have been higher than these other school districts. To me, that is where the money should be spent, not for the need, not for the wants of the community, but the needs of the community. Unfortunately, a lot of times these, these needs are for special interest groups. I mean, I played baseball when I was in high school. I enjoy sports. I think sports is very good for, for as many that can participate as can be. But when you put the needs of the special interest groups ahead of the rest, I think you do an injustice to the majority of the taxpayers of the community. And, um, to me, again, I think the academic aspects of the township, or I'm sorry, the school district are much more important than the, uh, we'll call it the wants, which are the, uh, sports, uh, participation aspects. Thank you.
Mr. Shola. Oh, yeah. We had a brief executive session prior to this meeting where we received information on a construction project, including financial data and procedures. We discussed personnel matters involving hiring and resignations. We got an update on the collective bargaining, um, process, and we discussed supplemental staffing positions and administrator evaluation process. Okay, as I said, we're gonna do things a little out of order tonight. The next thing we are gonna do is I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Harris for the recognition of the retirees.
And we have nine here this evening. They've given up, and Scott's gonna actually read the different, um, things we wrote up for each one of them. And I don't know why we have to move it closer. It's not like you have to get up and go to work tomorrow. We don't wanna make you have to go through a whole group meeting. But, um, we appreciate everything you've done. I know I've said my goodbyes to each and every one of you and throughout the different district and events, and you will definitely be missed. But we just wanna give you a small token of thanks and kinda just reward you for everything that you have done because you've made a difference. Everything that we do in Penn Trafford, you were a part of. You gave it your heart, your soul, um, your commitment, and we appreciate that. The school board appreciates that, the teachers, the parents, the community. So you will be missed, you will always be remembered. So thank you very much. Annie, Scott, you wanna start by?
Sure. Do we have, uh, is Miss Stefan's here? Georgia? Oh, there she is. I didn't see you were hidden there. Uh, this is Georgia Stefan. She's taught at the high school for, uh, 21 years. And, uh, she substituted for a number of years before that. She's taught biology, chemistry, environmental biology, all at the high school. Some of her best memories of teaching, uh, of her teaching career were outdoor studies, such as the stream study for the creeks that run through Harrison City and the outdoor insect collections and leaf collections that she does on a regular basis. So she's done a great job at the high school. We're gonna miss her, and, uh, she was dearly loved by all of her kids and staff and just a great person to have on staff, so we're gonna miss her. Thank you for all the years, Georgia. Congratulations.
We have cake tonight. We also wanna make sure you have something to take home for labor. You can also create it.
On the first day of school, get out and party. And you can laugh the rest of us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Arnett. Dave, where you at? Dave's been here over thirty-five years, and he taught two years as a permanent staff. He's taught a little bit of everything, fourth grade, third grade, fifth grade, and the first five years of his career were at the elementary level. He's taught eighth grade physical science and earth science, sixth grade reading, language arts, math, social studies, but primarily he's been a science guy. Uh, he taught at Trafford, Sunrise, Level Green, Penn Elementary, and Penn Middle School. So Dave said he's blessed to be able to return and give back the district that he grew up in. He's been a fixture over at Penn Middle School the time that I've known him, and I know he's very well respected and integrity is something you can always say about Mr. Arnett. So congratulations, Dave. Next, we have Karen Brown. Karen's been with the district for 34 years. She's taught first grade at Penn and McCullough Elementary Schools. Karen's best memory of teaching is not really an event that happened, but a realization that, uh, that made her fully understand how important her job is. She taught for seven years, uh, for seven years before she had her own children. She loved working with kids, and it was very rewarding to see them grow throughout the years. However, it was not until she saw her own child learn to read and write during his first grade year that she took a step back and said, "Wow, this is what I want to do every day." There are too many memories of all the children to recall just one, as her best, but she treasures all of them and continues to still feel the joy every time they pick up a book and read, knowing that she had a hand in their success. So congratulations, Karen.
Karen had both my boys, and they loved her. And every single morning they would stop and see her before they would go to school. And she just gave them that little confidence, that little smile that they needed just to get at the door. Then I noticed they were tired after she had my second one. Kinda suspicious, but I don't know. Because darling, we're tired after she had my second one. I appreciate everything she's done for my boys.
Next, we have Nancy Ferguson. Nancy's taught the district for 36 years. She's, she's taught, she started off teaching kindergarten. She taught third grade, and mostly she's been in the second grade. Uh, she's taught in the following buildings, Level Green, taught in Claridge until it closed, and, uh, and she's been in Sunrise the rest of her time. Her best memories of her teaching career, she enjoys seeing how students have been successful after they've gone on to high school and have graduated. She also loves talking to parents of former students and hearing how well their child is doing. She says, "It's rewarding to know that I have had a small part of their success." And truly have. Thank you. Rosemary Na. Rosemary is the librarian at Penn Middle School. She started out working at Penn Trafford in September of 1972. She's been the librarian at Penn for the entire career. She's taught sixth grade library skills, sixth grade study skills, and seventh grade computer aided instruction. Some of her best memories originated during her time with the new library facility that was added to the front of the school building. Both students and teachers alike were very eager to use the new library, and this truly was the center of the educational process. Do you wanna stick around and wait for this new library? This is a new, these older librarians don't like this new stuff. We're going, we're getting rid of a lot of books, and that's a little bit of a controversy for some of the people that have been around a while. But Rosemary's been a great teacher over there. I know she's very well respected, and, uh, I know my wife loves her. She teaches over there with her. So congratulations, Rosemary. Celeste. Celeste Bellissimo. Celeste, uh, she's, she came from Greensburg Salem High School. She went to Seton Hill and, uh, got her, uh, master's at Pitt, her teaching experience. She started off at Claridge Elementary School. I've heard about it a couple of times. I don't even, I wasn't around at that point. Where was Claridge?
Colton Hall.
Colton Hall? Is that what it was?
I went there.
Claridge Elementary. She taught fourth grade and departmental fifth grade until Claridge closed in 1982. Uh, she's taught McCullough Elementary since 1982 until 2014. She began McCullough, uh, teaching third grade. She later switched to kindergarten, and she taught kindergarten since 1988. Um, she's proud and grateful to have spent her entire career at Penn Trafford. During her retirement, she hopes to spend time with her two grown children, and she also plans to re-travel and walk for exercise.
So that started at forty-three years. Forty-three years is a long time. Long time.
She left that out of her biography at forty-three.
She left that off. I wanna make sure everyone realized that was forty-three, but she also told me, this is very interesting, you was in college, and you got your letter from Penn Trafford, you got your job, and your college dorms.
Well, I was still in college.
Well, she was still, so that is how good she was. She was recruited right from the college. Times have changed. You have to do six or seven years for the sub and watch the buses and...
Very different.
But we're glad she spent her forty-three years with us.
Next, I've had the privilege of working alongside Beverly Root Blake since my time here at Penn Trafford. She's been here for 36 years. Bev, uh, she's music teacher. She started elementary music in seventy-nine through 2002. She taught kindergarten through fifth grade at McCullough, Harrison Park, Claridge, and Penn. She taught sixth grade middle school band at Penn Middle School for three years. She taught with Mr. Toth, uh, and she taught with him as director of the fifth grade elementary band for six years. She was the school chorus, uh, middle school, school chorus at Penn Middle School for four years, eighth grade general music classes at Penn Middle School for two years, elementary instrumental music lessons for two years at Sunrise, high school choral director since 1995. She also has been the high school musical sponsor for, uh, the last 20 years, fall play sponsor for 11 years, and the music department chair for the past five years. She always enjoyed doing the chorus band concerts at the high school and middle school, elementary Christmas plays, fourth grade recorder concerts, fall play, musical performances, and some of her best memories are seeing the faces of parents and grandparents and how proud they are of seeing their children after the shows. And if you've seen any of the shows and been there afterwards in the lobby, those kids just, they just light up, just like she said. And she's done a great job for many, many years, and, uh, she can be very, very hard to replace, uh, with everything that she does. She's, she works a lot of hours, and she's done a fine job. So we're gonna miss you, Bev. Thank you.
I think I was up to about ten cents an hour.
I thought it was five cents.
Thank you. It's been enjoyable.
When we did Night of the Stars, it was so nice because all the schools were showcasing their performance. I was so proud to say, "I'm from Penn Trafford," and it was like, "Oh." And it was great. And your last concert, how many people was there to show up? Was it over?
Oh, it was over.
I was over a thousand. There was over a thousand people at that last concert.
Standing room only.
And you couldn't even get to her. The receiving line was so long. So I had to go to the line for the food instead.
My husband said he's gonna hate to see when I die because it's gonna be out the door.
It was a, it was a good night. Appreciate all that you have done.
Okay, next, Vivian Light. Vivian began teaching at Penn Trafford in the fall of ninety-seven after subbing for the district for about two years. She commuted between Level Green and Sunrise and taught grades one through five in special needs classes with Janice Novasell's room. She has received her master's in elementary and transferred into grade one at Harrison Park Elementary, even though, uh, Dr. Marassi had, and I know this, I remember he used to say this, he shook her, shook his head whenever she said she wanted to do first grade. She said, "Vivian, Vivian, did anybody tell you that nobody volunteers to do first grade? First grade's a tough, tough gig." At Harrison Park in grade two, she stayed until the end of her career. She expanded and grew her personal children's library. She's always been excited about collecting different genres and authors to get children hooked on the love of reading. When children are avid readers, you can hear authors' voices in their writing. She received an individual pride award in 2004 based on developing reading and writing growth. She's always visualized her library with a classroom in it rather than the other way around. The best thing about Penn Trafford is that it is home. She grew up here, raised a family with a hometown boy, and educated three daughters. She always puts a hundred percent effort into her job, feels blessed to have worked with great administrators, staff, colleagues, and a great talent who have all had great talent and integrity. So Vivian, thank you for many years. Great work.
Mine and mine was in jail together. Two, two different times. We were in jail together two different times at Barnes &amp; Noble. It's all in how you tell the story, Vivian. It's all in the story.
That was fun.
Great promotion, Nancy. We generated a lot of money when we was at Harrison Park.
Yeah, I thought that, that was fun. Thank you.
And last, we have Susan McCabe. Susan.
Does she have the years on this one, too? This is about the one with the years.
No, there's no years on here. Tell us how many years.
Start off with who you're gonna be called on.
I'll have to never.
How many years?
My years towards one.
I know it was in the forties. Sue started at Penn Trafford in 1970, teaching junior, junior first grade. Are there such things, junior first grade?
What is that? Three years. Transition between kindergarten and first grade was full year. We know they went from a half-day kindergarten to a full-year junior first, and then went into first grade. It was great. I tracked them. They all did great.
Junior first grade. That was at Trafford Elementary, uh, the old Edgewood building. That's where I went to elementary school until they closed it. After two years, the class moved to Sunrise, so she taught junior first grade at Sunrise. Then another year after that, finally ran out, so she was offered a third grade classroom. In 1977, she was approached about taking on another new venture, split second and third grade. This necessitated a move back to Trafford Elementary. This lasted two years. Students' numbers did not merit another year of this, so she moved on to fifth grade. And from nineteen eighty to eighty-three, she was on maternity, non-paid leave. Upon her return, she was placed in a fifth grade classroom at Level Green where she worked until 2002, when she was asked to be the first instructional coach team. She was, uh, based at McCullough but visited all elementary buildings during the 2002-3 school year. The previously, the previous elementary gifted coordinator announced his retirement, and she applied for that position. She always thought that would be a cool job, but never thought she would have a chance. Unbeknownst to her, when she applied, it included Penn Middle School. So three years, she was at Penn Middle School, so she was at Penn Middle School in all five elementary buildings, then ended with just the five elementary buildings, which she still has today. She's taught elementary classrooms of every subject. She had a specialty, would be science. She got that by default from her first year in fifth grade, but loved it and felt the scientific method is the way that kids can learn. Her best memories are the people she worked with, young and old coworkers and students. She will miss them all. Congratulations, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm not going anywhere.
You're not going anywhere? I hope not, too. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Like I said, we're gonna have time just for some cake, and then you're always more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, at least people have it.
Dr. Harris, can I say?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do wanna have time for cake and a meeting with the board. I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Yes, Dr. Trey.
Okay, folks, I, I know all of you. Been around for a long time, and did you realize that I was in your first junior first grade class? Did you know that, too? I'm just kidding.
No, you know what? I realized that kids in my first class are 50 years old. Because I was 21 and they were six. I mean, they were six, and I turned 44 years, and they're now 50.
You're not 50. Well, that's why I was in your junior first grade class. Here I am today. Can you tell? Thank you so much. I've got a chance to work with you in so many different capacities, and even when we had differences for whatever the topic might be, you were so professional, and you always, in every, every defense you had, you always kept the kids in the forefront. How could, how could you disagree with anybody with that care and concern? We're gonna miss you an awful lot. I've served the board.
We do need some time for photos, too, from the press. It wouldn't be a true board meeting without, um, without Georgia taking some pictures. Uh, Georgia, where was you? Up front. Thank you. If you can, if the retired teachers, some please come forward from the room.
Homecoming. Yes, yes. If you're in the back.
Need a window.
Okay. We should put you back in there. There you go. Okay. The reds. You know what? I'm going to suggest that because he's tall. Should I change with her? We're fine. I want you to just kind of help with that. We'll go back to the regular agenda, okay? Um, the special reports, IU number seven, Mr. Leonard.
Yes, at our May 27th meeting, uh, we had several items under finance, which included to approve the treasuries report, bills to be paid, and ratified our investments. Uh, then we presented the outstanding Para Educator of the Year Award to Marie Nicole. Uh, we approved several professional contracts, including Holiday Consulting Group to provide Gatsby 45 actuarial services for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, and the purchase of a replacement telephone system for the Clarview School from CCL Technologies, and this was under a 2013-14 CoStarz contract. We accepted retirements of three occupational therapists. We approved several medical leaves, several family leaves, the illness and disability leaves, and maternity leaves. Lots of leaves. Uh, we added employment agreements for the upcoming school year and some summer work for eight. Job coaches, 34 teachers, 24 classroom assistants, and personal care assistants, two nurses, and one psychiatrist. We approved the agreement between the, this was a big one, we approved the agreement between the Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit Board and the Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit Education Association. We approved the Westmoreland County Intermediate Units calendars for the 2014-15 school year. We approved the dates for the Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit Board directed meetings for next 12 months. That included my report, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Dr. Trey. Libraries and legislative council.
Thank you, Madam President. So related to libraries, we still are not engaged in any significant conversation related to the status of the library funding at this time and potentially other, uh, other supported activities such as recreation and so on. So that's deferred until another more convenient time. It keeps getting, uh, put on the background through other more pressing issues. Uh, related to the, um, the legislative office, we had a meeting, it was our Southwest Regional meeting, was at the IU Westmoreland Intermediate Unit on Saturday. Uh, it represented probably 30 school systems there, of which 13 out of the 17 in Westmoreland County were represented. Uh, we had five legislative offices present there also, representatives, either the representatives themselves or their chief of staff. That was, uh, it was, how do I relate this? We've all seen the movie at one time called, uh, Groundhog Day. Unfortunately, the same types of frustration we've dealt with every year seems to come back and come back and come back. For two hours, it was mainly a venting scenario. We did interact with our legislators. We did find out they're very supportive, but I'll give you in a nutshell what it consists of, and it's pretty depressing. So probably you understand maybe a little better why sometimes it's so negative when I come back from, uh, constant interaction with our higher levels of government. But pretty much, uh, basically what they said to us was that basically our southwestern Pennsylvania reps, despite party differences, we do know they're open to compromise. Our people out here will compromise to get something done. But when it goes out to southeastern Pennsylvania, which dominates the states and dominates the governance of what's going on, there's no flexibility. They call the shots, and they're at odds, and they gave many examples in, in the process of this. But they did not, they did not give up on the vow to fight for what they believe is correct, and also for not, for getting along and communicating to try to solve our problems. So we talked specifically about legislation through the course of the two hours, and basically I could tell exactly what they said. Related to Plan Con, a basic funding, uh, basic education funding formula change, charter school reform, PISers and SIRS pension reform, prevailing wage, and also special ed funding formula, there's not gonna be any, but anything passed this year that can't get the votes to do it. So pretty much, that's the way it's gonna be. It's a pattern after much of what we do in the federal level. They're obviously disappointed and frustrated that they're hanging in there, but they don't see much hope. The closest thing that they'd say might make it is the special education funding formula might be revised because it, uh, it, um, seems to be a better balance, and it's fair to all school systems and also to the level which special needs are done. However, there's a tremendous charter school, uh, pro, uh, support for, against this, and they're very prominent in the southeastern part of the state, so it, it's another chance where that may get buried in the, in the first place. Now, we did, between frustration moments, we did get some useful information that caused us to dialogue a little bit, and I will share those few things with us. It only takes a couple of minutes. One, we did that, did learn that charter schools across the state, to some degree, are starting to invest some of the money selected by, used by, provided by public schools to do, uh, to, to invest in nonprofits, to support groups and other organizations. That created a little bit of controversy. Some of our legislators were very interested in that and are trying to determine how that's being done. It just didn't seem to be right, and, and, uh, supporting a zoo or something else with signs and what have you down the line. So they're, they're trying to approach that area. Also, we shared the moment that several school systems in our area, quite a few more out, out east, much of the problem created by lost funds through charter schools are in the process of trying to ask for mergers. They're asking districts around them, leased one in Allegheny County, one very close in Westmoreland. They're already asking districts around them about merging. They're ready to capitulate and close in. Now, that's creating thought, a lot of thought, because that hasn't happened for a long time. We have to go back to Duquesne, and that created the, the state intervention, also reduced federal intervention, and some very, rather extreme policies. So we, that is coming to the forefront increasingly, and one of the steps in this process, a number of schools have been identified where the first thing they're starting to do before they begin to break down is they start to subcontract administrative services, like passing out, they're having payroll done somewhere else, or, or doing their, uh, PIMS testing, or whatever it might be, a lot of their, their work, some maintenance, some And there was one, one bit of data thrown out there. I can't validate it. It came from one of our legislators, it might have been for Tarka, that it's from his office. No, it came from PSBA. And it said that basically 11%, of the state's school population are in charter schools, but in actuality, they're absorbing 33% of the school money. That's a three to one ratio. I can't detail it more than that, but that came out of PSBA. And I concluded that, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Mr. Petrucci, career tech.
Thank you, Madam President. I hope to be a little more upbeat than my friend Dr. Trey over there. He had a bad time. Okay, graduation vote tech was Monday, May 12th, and Penn Trafford had 23 graduates. And they had three, three students win four senior, special senior awards. And the students are Nicholas Franza in Admiral Technology, Robert McGone, Penn Trafford, Culinary Arts, and this next young man, Brandon Tatlinger, he's in welding. He won the Westmoreland County Commissioners Award from Ted Kopus, and he also won a Career Day Scholarship. So congratulations to those young people who are representing Penn Trafford very well. In the regular meeting, we unfortunately, we have another situation in the vote tech that we have right here at the PT Senior High School. We're looking for another high school principal. Troy Collier, who was with us two years, a nice young fellow, took a job at Norman School District, and he starts, I believe it's gonna be the first of August, he's gonna take over. Johnson Controls, the gentleman sitting right behind us in the lavender shirt there. They got our fire security system. They got the award for $132,000, which include emergency evacuation system going with it. And we are gonna start advertising for the principal's job July 16th. On the, and the punch-out list is also, my friend, I developed a friendship here with Mr. Carl Spooty, and he's one that has directed us through most of all this, and he's been very good to us. And the punch-out list, the Johnson Controls also on the punch-out list, the Royal Tank Rule, which I talked to you about for the past few months, should be done by the 30th of June. And this will, I hope, wrap it up. And like you said, that's two weeks, an open spot to check out the air, the water, and the soil for any contaminants. And if so, then they, if not, then they fill back in again, they pave over it, and that'll be completely taken care of. And we're also gonna have a meeting in July, there's a special meeting July 16th for us to hire a new principal. And now, and a good, and the most important part of the meeting for everybody, of course, is the goody treatment. Relish dish, meat and cheese dish, sliders, and the homemade buns and slivers are pretty good. Ham, chicken, and tuna with snickerdoodles, chocolate cake, lady loks, and fruit cocktail. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrucci. All right, records, Penn Township.
Let me take it, Phil?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm gonna say. We met on May, oh, thank you, Madam President. We met on May 22nd. Actually, it's one of our shorter meetings of the year. Basically, approved bills, we had a PTARC update, some of the high points from that. I'm sure somebody from PTARC would like it as well. But June 25th, at 6:00 p.m., we're gonna have Phase One Grand Open over at the municipal park. So we're all welcome to attend, if you'd like. Recognition of the walking trail, the dog park, and the work that went into increasing the pond size as well. With the pond size, we did get a letter from Carson's Hope, who does the annual fishing derby. They had 135 participants this year, and actually, all the kids get to fish for free. But they raised $1,200 from local vendors just contributing to the, to the fishing derby. So, and it actually was a pretty rainy day, but there was a bunch of kids, including my son, that's down there as well. Now, we talked about the park coordinator position, that we're gonna basically put it on hold for, too late in the season to try to get somebody in and start the process a little bit sooner. Essentially, the position was to be an adjunct to scheduling of the pavilions and just sort of coordination in the park. And by the time we'd actually get somebody in, half the season would be over. So it's only a summer-type position. So we're gonna look at ramping that back up again next year. And other than that, so we're not gonna meet until September. Phil, anything else I missed?
No, do you have any report on the Memorial Day tournament, how the traffic went with the shuttle parking?
Heard really well.
Any feedback on that?
Heard really well. There was, from a softball perspective, there was 83 teams down there for the weekend. And I heard that the coordination that carried it with regards to the parking was outstanding. So.
The high school parking really was not a, everything that I gathered was not a concern. So it worked out very well.
I talked to all the parents that attended, and they just said it was really well done. And I'm sure there was a little bit of, you know, but even when they let out, they said it was sort of smooth because people.
Gradual.
Yeah, gradual.
Somebody put on the WhatsApp and Penn Trafford Facebook page that they were very impressed with how well traffic was handled that night.
So I think a lot of the awareness was about it prior, but I think Kerry did a nice job covering the plan, so. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Mr. Petrucci, Trafford Borough.
Thank you, Madam President. We met on May 19th, but before that, on May 8th, we went to Permanente Playground, took a tour of what we're applying for, for a new playground to get done. It's right in the middle of town, right next to the Old High School. And they figured it'd come out to $97,000 right now. And Cheryl, Karen, and PTARC are writing in, writing for that grant. And we only had to pay 15% of it, which is just because of the Marcella Shell money and a Commonwealth grant. We're not doing DCN or DCN, we have to pay 33%. The fishing derby's coming up this Friday, I mean, Saturday, sorry, at BY Park, 9 to 12, 75 catfish release. There'll be prizes for the different age brackets and different sizes of fish caught. They had the Senior Citizens Day at, on Thursday, I want to say Mace, I think it was May the 15th, for senior citizens, they don't have to pay half price. We picked up the other half price, and nine senior citizens took advantage of it, and they enjoyed the afternoon show. Playground start on the, next Monday, on the 9th. And down at BY Park, many students from Gateway School District took prom pictures, and then some kids went down afterwards and took cap and gown picture, high school picture, because they liked the scenery down at BY Park. And our next meeting is June 30th, Madam President. I saw that report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Petrucci. Penn Borough.
No report.
Oh, no report. All right, thank you, Dr. Trey. All right. Next up is PTARC, and that's me. We met this afternoon. An Eagle Scout, Matt Rosso, Rosso?
Rosso.
Rosso came, and he presented his project to us. He wants to do a rain garden down to PTARC building. He asked for some funding helping it, and we did approve it that. The general account balance this year at the end of May is up approximately $4,200 over last year. As far as the PTARC building, the income so far this year has been about $5,100. The expenses have been about $8,900, although the rentals are up. However, their electric and gas bill doubled during the winter months because of the harsh winter. They're offering some new programs. On July 19th, they will have a flea market. And on September 6th, they're gonna have what they call a cardiac 5K. To which we said, what is a cardiac 5K? They found the steepest hill in the area. I thought it was in my neighborhood personally, but they didn't agree. Snyder Road.
Oh, Snyder.
Is it, is it bad? It's bad, okay.
We lose a lot of buses there.
In the winter?
Yeah.
I'm gonna check this out. So let's see how many of you all try, come out and do the cardiac 5K. Anyway, also, the triathlon, their biggest event of the year is June 21st, and the Bushy Run 5K is July 13th. Their online registration has been a big hit. Last year, in May, they had 641 registrations using credit cards. This year, this May, they had 3,700. The summer programs start June 9th, and they're, this week, they're training the workers. And I thought this was really neat. They're, they're having a couple teachers from the district. Dave Martin is one of them, and my name, the other name escapes me. But basically, they're also training these students on discipline and bullying. Apparently, a study was done that showed kids feel the most threatened at a playground. That's kind of disturbing. The big news of the day was that Cheryl plans on retiring approximately beginning of January 2015. Her daughter's having a baby, she wants to babysit. So basically, however her daughter's schedule works out as far as going back to work, that will decide when Cheryl does retire. And that's all I have on that end. Now, Matt, Dr. Harris.
We're Penn Trafford Community Education Foundation. Mr. Jeff Brady and I went through, Brett gave us the vendor list for the district, and every single person who was on our vendor list that is also an EITC grant, who actually donate through that grant foundation, we actually matched up. So if we're doing business with them, we are gonna contact each one by phone to say we're part of the EITC, we're interested, and please, we give you business, please give us some EITC money. So that's our goal for this month.
You wanna explain what the EITC money is?
It's for educational income tax, or income tax credit, or earned income tax. I always get that one next up, is when companies can donate their monies to schools or foundations versus actually paying taxes at the end of the year. And we've had several people in the past, this past month, we had, not through the EITC foundation, but we actually received money through Waste Management, Westinghouse, and different companies have gave us EITC dollars directed to our foundations.
I believe 80% of that money has to go to pre-programs we have to submit. The remaining 20%, I believe, can be used for any other grants.
And we have a couple programs in place. We actually do the mass customized learning, the math rooms at Harrison Park, and we actually, with that money, we are putting one in each building, Level Green, Sunrise, McCullough, and Trafford Elementary as well, so that money came through. We also have the robotics as part of that program, with Jeff Newsom at the high school. So money earmarked from the EITC helps pay for the robotics program. The camp convention this past year with the summer, with the Science Center, Mrs. Calley always runs, is supported through EITC money. They look for different programs above and beyond. They don't want to just give standard money to tutoring programs, basic programs. They want something extra. And those programs are always doing something extra, going above and beyond the Call of Duty. In addition to the EITC money, we're still listening, the Bachmann Foundation donated $5,000 and their families, it's connected to the families who own the corner store. We was actually going down there buying balloons. Chief Otto started talking to him about why he was buying the balloons for one of our foundation events. They said, well, have you ever considered looking at our own foundation? We didn't really know it was out there. It just happened, and the next thing you know, we got $5,000. So all three is buying some balloons for one of our many events that we're out there trying to raise money. So it's a good foundation, it's a strong foundation, and actually, we're gonna be taken. They're gonna be helping us with our naming rights kickoff, what we're doing for the building project. And we should be having a meeting or an event in July, and we're gonna be promoting it, and we will be signing the naming rights to our rooms in the building. So every one of us can actually purchase a room or two. It's very cost-affordable, the way we have earmarked. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harris. All right, now on to information. Back to you.
That's actually me again.
Yeah.
Just a couple announcements. One, and I already shared this with the schools and the board, I just kind of wanted to let the whole board know to get, as a collectively, the Governor's Award for Excellence for Academics. Two of our schools actually received it for their, making an A on the school profile report. The first one was McCullough Elementary, they received an A. And the second one, which was very hard to do because not too many high schools were in that category, and that was Penn Trafford High School. Thank you, Mr. Engle. And now that we have that base, we want to continue.
All right.
And June 17th, we're having a safety meeting with the different police forces, fire department, Rescue Six, municipal building, all the principals, and we do that, remember, we do that twice a year to make sure everything is safe. That's all I have.
Dr. Harris, real quick, I went down to the naming list there. We're gonna include the stadium and the track, like, also.
We are, we have to add those to that chart.
Okay.
There was a lot that, for some reason, when we made the brochure, it was left off, so I want to make sure it goes back on.
Okay. All right, I think you're up still. Athletics and extracurriculars.
Sure.
You have the rest of the show.
Next week, I keep saying next week, it's actually the 19th. So remember, we moved our board meeting in conjunction with the bid opening for a renovation project. But under athletics and extracurricular, a separate nation, employee personnel. Under budget and finance, adopt 2014-15 school district budget. Grant permission to advertise for items requiring competitive bidding in 2014-2015. Authorization to pay end-of-year invoices and make end-of-year budgetary transfers. Name bank depositaries for 2014-2015. Approve payment for credits earned, assigned fund balance. Approve expenditures relating to high school renovation for May of 2014. Buildings, grounds, and safety. Award construction bid for the high school renovation project. That should be a nice night because when I first started in central office about seven years ago, we started working on, and then the different building projects. So it's nice to see that's actually being done. And I'd like to thank everyone for the hard work and effort that made that possible because you put above and beyond the Call of Duty with the number of hours studying everything that I've ever sent to you in the last seven years. So thank you. Approve owner-controlled insurance program code for high school renovation. We won't have anything under employee relations, negotiation, transportation, or food service. Personnel and curriculum. Approve substitute teachers and personnel for the month of June. Approve tenanted assignments for 2014-15. Employed school physicians and dentists for 2014-15. Acceptance of fellow official ratings for 2013-14. Extend supplemental contracts. Approve summer instrumental music program. Authorize the administration to post, advertise, and interview candidates for any vacancy that occurs prior to the August meeting. Employee personnel, accept resignations. Approve textbook purchases, the only two minor ones, and we're just doing class sets. As you know, with our science money, all the elementary schools wanted to do something different because we're no longer buying textbooks, we're actually investing in hands-on materials, technology. Sunrise did want a class set, and since it's a class set, we still have to approve it of the Science Fusion Series, just for two grades. The reason they want it, it has a lot of virtual labs built into it that our old textbook doesn't. And through those labs, it was actually cheaper to buy the textbook and have a series than it was to actually buy the lab. So that's kind of why we want to adopt a textbook and make complete sense. And the other one, and this is just a small purchase, $2,700 because the business department always just buys like a desk copy, they remember, business, it changes more infrequently than other ones. It's for macroeconomics for the AP student. It's $2,700 for.
So are these books, these books are gonna be up for review? Anyone can stop by and look at them?
Sure. Anyone can stop by in the admin building.
Till the 19th?
Till the 19th. And even after 19th, we always have books available at any time. You can come to the admin office, high school, just make a phone call, and we'll hook you up. All right. Employee professional personnel, that's an action item, so we have to get it tabbed too, and someone has to take over.
Move the following professional employee effective August 18th, 2014, to teaching areas of his respective certification and assigned by administration. Employers are contingent upon receipt of all signed contract, not later than Friday, June 6th, 2014, and subsequent receipt of all necessary certification documentation and acceptance of Act 340151 and 114 waivers from the Department of Pennsylvania. Eric Crompton, Level and Staff is M7, his salary is $50,000.
Second.
Question.
All right, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
So am I, Madam President.
Thank you.
And he would be here tonight, he's actually, right now, living in Tuwanda, Pennsylvania.
Where the heck is that?
Tuwanda. And I had to find out myself, where do we say, was that towards?
Tuwanda is north, northeast. Way north, northeast.
It's north of Williamsburg. Or at the New York Board. I don't know where.
So he's originally coming, he's originally from Ringgold, and he thinks Penn Trafford is just the best place to be. So I was really happy that he was coming.
What would he be teaching?
He would be teaching the ITech at the high school. And remember, we're trying to, those courses, we're trying to gear up with all of our engineering and STEM initiatives and Project Lead the Way, so he's gonna be a great addition because he actually had seven years' experience doing almost similar job at Tuwanda.
Back to you.
Under our policy to public relations, legislative panel two, accept and file committee meeting minutes of May 5th, 2014. Continue roll call procedures for 2014-15. Continue bond coverage for board secretary and assistant board secretary. Approve attendance at 2014-15 conventions. Authorization to submit federal program applications. Approve participation in Dr. P. Schools and Communities Act. Adopt Attachment A of IDEA-B Program Narrative. Tentatively approve revision policy 137, home education programs, and administrative regulation those courses, we're trying to gear up with all of our engineering and STEM initiatives and project lead the way, so he's going to be a great addition because he actually had seven years' experience doing almost similar job at Tuwanda.
Okay. Back to you.
Under policies, public relations legislative panel two. Acceptance of file committee minutes of May 5, 2014. Continue roll call procedures for 2014-15. Continue bond coverage for board secretary and assistant board secretary. Approve attendance at 2014-15 conventions. Authorization to submit federal program applications. Approve participation in direct to schools and communities act. Adopt Attachment A of IDEA-B program narrative. Tentatively approve revision policy 137, home education programs, and administrative regulation 137 AR home education program requirements. Remember, those two programs, we have some students who are homeschooled that actually want to take some courses in our school district. We never had policies either way, so now we're adding it. If you are homeschooled, you're welcome to also take courses at the high school as well. Taxes, insurance, census. Award all sports insurance. Award student accident insurance. Appoint a legal and tax collector. Adopt homestead and farmstead exclusion resolution. Adopt tax resolutions. Set mileage rate for 2014-15. Approve $5 for capital tax. Approve the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, and we've been talking about that. That's the LURDA, and that's all we have.
All right. Anything else? Anybody?